Call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Trustee Hargit.
Here.
Trustee Levin.
Here.
Trustee Mirabella.
Here.
Trustee McCarthy.
Here.
Trustee White.
Here.
Trustee Whitmore. Here. Mayor? Oh, no.
Uh, here. Please stand for tonight's invocation of the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Carlson from Grace Missionary Church.
Thank you, Mayor and trustees, for the opportunity to keep on doing this. It's a great tradition and appreciate. Let's pray. God in heaven, we thank you so much that we can come before you in the massive name of Jesus, your only Son and our only Savior. Especially this time of year, thank you so much that Jesus, who is the reason for this season, can be living in our hearts through faith. Thank you so much for peace on earth, goodwill toward men, words that the world quotes without attribution. They were first spoken by the angels, a multitude of angels, an entire populace over the Palestinian hills, and they told of Jesus being born. We thank you for the opportunity to be able to live in a world where the presence of peace has come. We thank you that people walking in darkness have seen a great light of light as Jesus, the light of the world. Through the time of rejoicing and celebration, Father God, we're coming to the end of a year that's passed quite quickly and the beginning of a new run of hope. I pray, Father, you'd help us to continue to do all things well. May this group, this body, finish the business of our citizens for this evening, for this year, finish well, look forward with that vision and faith for the next year. We're going to celebrate, we're going to honor some people tonight, and we also, Father, want to think of one of our own, Keke Peetie, Father, who passed away and has his service on Thursday. We thank you, Father God, for he is the greatest of traditions of firefighters in serving his community. Because he was a man of faith, we also believe, Father, that he is in heaven at this time. I pray you'd help us, Father, to rejoice for him and to encourage and comfort the family and come together as a community as we remember and as we reflect. I thank you, Father God, for the privilege of doing all these things because you give us life, you give us new life in Jesus' name. You're bringing that thing.
Good afternoon.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion to approve the November 16th, 2021 regular board meeting minutes.
Subpo.
Second. Any discussion on the minutes? Roll call, please.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried. We move on to Mayor's Report. First item, oath of office for Christopher Zfransky, promoting him to full-time police officer. I'd ask Chris to come forward.
So it's my pleasure to introduce our newest full-time officer who's going to start December 27th, Officer Chris Zfransky. Chris comes from us, comes to us from both the North Chicago and the Sleepy Hollow Police Department. Chris is a Navy veteran. Yeah, yeah, they don't get away that easy.
My wife Maria, my son Hunter, and my daughter Elle.
Come on, Hunter and Elle. Come on. Are you going to do the honors?
Sure.
It's a big giant pen. Easy enough to miss. And we're just pleased and proud to have him. He's a U.S. Navy veteran, served overseas in combat tours, combat areas. He's a Master Chief. What is your rank?
I'm a, uh, I'm a Bay Harbor Second Class from Master of Arms, uh, so the Navy military.
Yeah, so he comes those from there and he used to be a corpsman before that. So he has tons of experience, great, great officer. We're super proud to have him. We can't wait till he starts with us. So if you see him out there, just say hello. He's going to do us a dish.
Mayor. Thank you, sir. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Chris Zfransky.
Having been appointed a police officer.
Having been appointed as a police officer.
For the village of Winter Harbor.
For the village of Winter Harbor.
In Lake County, Illinois.
In Lake County, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of a patrol officer.
The duties of a patrol officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
I think those shoes could take us to Oz.
Thank you very much.
And the more and more I give the oath of office, you know, like a better idea.
Oh, yeah.
And we need to keep higher, higher, higher. All right, we move on to item number two. I need a motion to adopt the resolution, appointment resolution, appointing Kyle A. Mapco as a part-time police officer. You said, you, oh, you did. Oh, sorry, I didn't hear that. Motion second. Any discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried. We move on to item number three. I need a motion to set aside the rules of the President and Board of Trustees to waive the first and second readings of ordinance amending the wage policy ordinance of Winter Harbor to provide severance pay for the village administrator.
Subpo.
This is actually, uh, after looking at the different options out there in the village administrator field, I guess you could say, uh, we were still at six, you know, 30-day severance and for other villages comparable to the size of Winter Harbor, they're at three months. So that's what this is doing. It's just changing it from 30 days to three months. Any other comments on that? Roll call, please.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried. Move on to item four. I need a motion to approve the village administrator employment agreement.
Subpo. Second.
Any discussion on that? All right. I'll do, I'll first do a roll call and then I'm going to bring Dave up to the podium.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried. David, would you like to address the board? Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you, thank you. I just want to give my sincere appreciation to each and every board member for your confidence and for your support, and I look forward to coming onboard January 3rd, rolling up my sleeves and starting to work on the vision that the board has and working with my fellow team members and department heads and all the employees of the village of Winter Harbor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is a proclamation recognizing Robert Long for his service. The reason I wanted to do this was Bob has, I call him Bob Long, but Bob has done so much to, in the interim, village administrator role after Greg left, before Dave came on. And he's done such an outstanding job. It's not been easy. We've talked many, many times and it's not been easy. I understand that, but I think you've done a commendable job. So I'm going to read this proclamation. The village of Winter Harbor proclamation recognizing Robert Long for his service to the citizenry of the village of Winter Harbor. Whereas it is the sense of the people of the village of Winter Harbor to recognize the quality and character of life in our community is reflective of the concern and dedicated efforts of those organizations and individuals who devote themselves to the welfare of the community and the citizenry. And whereas Robert Long began his service as village attorney for the village of Winter Harbor in 1997. And whereas throughout his 24 years of service, Robert Long has been integral link to the village of Winter Harbor by providing sound legal advice. And whereas apart from his legal advice, Robert Long has been instrumental in the development of the future vision of this great community. And whereas in times of need, Robert Long has always been ready and willing to serve the village of Winter Harbor in any capacity, most recently serving in the role of interim village administrator. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and board of trustees of the village of Winter Harbor do hereby express our sincere and grateful appreciation to Robert Long for his dedications and service to this community, adopted this 21st day of December of 2021. Proclamation, I will file, I will frame it and get it to you.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Okay, we move on to village administrators' reports.
How do you follow something like that up? It's not easy. But let me just simply say this, that the reason we have success over the last 24 and a half years is because of the dedication of the people that work for the village. And I'm not talking about myself. I'm talking about the department heads. I'm talking about the police officers, firemen, the guys in the public works, support staff, everybody that does the stuff, especially the people you don't see every day. They're there in lousy weather. We have a remarkable December right now, but it hasn't always been that way. And people are out there plowing, they're out there in the rain, they're out there trying to save lives in the most difficult of circumstances imaginable and deliver services. I remember trying to, just a few years ago, trying to find ways to get water to residents' houses in the middle of polar vortexes while everything was frozen up and we were unable to do a decent job of fighting fires. It's frustrating to those folks. What I can tell you is the dedication is reflected in everything those people do. Something I don't think I completely understood until I was sitting in that office over there for the last six months and I got to see them on a day-by-day basis. I knew most of them for many years, some of them for decades, but only when you really see the way they operate and how much effort, honesty, integrity, the dedication they put into their work for this village, then you begin to understand what makes a community is at the core, the people that you selected to represent you and to deliver the body of services that you need. And within that setting, rather than talk about a few of the other topics that have happened in the last month and are going to be coming up, let me just leave you with these closing thoughts as I end this particular phase of my career and move on to, back into the position of attorney and advisor, much more than an active participant in that sense. And that is, you have a vision, you have a strong vision. It was developed over a period of two decades as we built one plan after another, starting with the station area plan, if you remember that. Significant modifications to the zoning code, including the downtown code, that it should bring in appearance to the village that set it apart. The comprehensive plan to, oh, ton of other plans, TIF plans. All of these things are sitting there waiting for the opportunity and frankly, some money from developers and from other interested people to try to put them into action. And if you do manage to get them put into action, and it will take one, two, maybe three or four, before they'll achieve critical mass and you can start actually seeing that there's excitement and development and things that are happening, you'll see our property values increase, you'll see the tax burden on the residents will dissipate, you'll see that the science of life and interest in our community will come back and come roaring back in a way that they haven't been for a while. And that, the reason they haven't happened in the past, we've gotten stuck first with the Great Recession in 2007 when we were very close to a development down on the Triangle on Seventh and Sheridan Road, and then this pandemic hit. Not much we can do about that. Those are global problems. Those aren't things that are engendered locally. There's nothing we did wrong. Everything we did was in fact right. We had the people lined up, we were ready to proceed. Unfortunately, events transpired that exceeded our ability to cope and in fact, the nation's ability to cope this challenge. So as a result, as exciting as that may be for our period, what I would like you to simply keep in mind is we have presented over this series of visions, seances, if you will, the where the village really is in all the departments and the people we serve and what the needs are. We have come forward to show what the challenges to meeting those needs are, from a financial and manpower risk aspects. And finally, we have shown that there is a financial way to move forward. You have to be careful with the use of your finances and very conservative financing should result in sparking the rebuilding of Sheridan Road and the business corridor, and that will bleed over onto and provide a lot of lift, if you will, because we all know that a rising tide lifts all boats, and that's nowhere more salient to say than a town that has one of the largest marinas in the United States. So let's utilize our resources to the best of our ability. Let's make sure that we don't forget what the vision is, key in on it, let's keep it alive, fresh, bring it back up, look at it again and again. If it needs tweaking, tweak the vision, but don't deviate from it. By that, I mean don't start giving favors to people that, you know, look like they're good folks, that have good ideas, well, but the good ideas don't match the vision. Think about the vision and what it's going to bring for everybody by the time you're through. People out there deserve these services that they get from the people that have, that they've hired and put into these positions. They need those services, and the only way they're going to get that service going forward is if there's financial stability, and the only way to financial stability is to improve the business climate in this community and make sure that it's viable, thriving, and alive, attract people here that want to live here and want to live and enjoy some of the amenities we have in this community, from the trails and the parks on down. So from that, I leave you with those closing thoughts, and I ask you, please, remember the vision, stick to it. As Pat like to say, you know, plan the work and work the plan. We've planned the work, now it's time to work the plan and to make it work for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Okay, we move on to court's first comments.
I have nothing.
We have nothing. No whole business, so the next item, I need a motion to go into closed session for any lawful purpose, including but not limited to, pending litigation, five ILCS 120-2, C11.
Subpo.
Any motion? Second, second. Roll call.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried.
That's a group, that motion should reflect, or the record should reflect, there was no action taken.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
All right, so go back, we move into new business committee reports. Administration and Community Development Committee, Trustee Hargit.
I make a motion to approve a council payable warrant in 2021-9, an amount of $215,000, $215,444.59.
Second. Any discussion on the warrant? Roll call, please.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried.
I make a motion to request approval to enter into a professional design services agreement with Sanjay R. Stinghal for an amount not to exceed $2,500 for the completion of conceptual site plan for the Triangle.
Second. Any discussion on that?
Just reinforcing that this is something that was discussed during the vision meeting.
Right.
It aligns with the comprehensive plan. To Bob's point earlier, the working plans.
Yep.
Working the plans from before me, because this has been in conceptions as before me, and it's, I've been on almost, what, 13 years now? I'm just saying, either poop or get off the pot to me. It's, no, I'm just being honest. We've been dragging this triangle out for so long and it's before my time. I just wish we'd get it over with and decide what we're doing and get on with it instead of dumping money.
We're doing it right now.
I'm just saying, I hope we do because I don't want to come back and we're doing more plans on it because we've done so many plans on it now, I can tell you, I wish we had all that money that we did the plans on.
This $2,500 for the record comes from the TIF funds.
I know, I understand, I'm just.
I just don't want these folks out for me.
Hargit. All right. Roll call, please.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried.
I make a motion to approve the contract with Stratus to clean all village hall plus the public works facility as presented and terminate existing contracts for cleaning.
Second. Any discussion? This is including public works, which was not included before, correct? It's really, it's going to cost less money than what we were paying before.
Yep.
That's correct. Okay. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, last one of my own. I move to set aside the rules of the President and Board of Trustees to waive the first and second reading for the ordinance amending the wage policy ordinance of Winter Harbor reflecting increase in the state minimum wage.
Can that, can we have that motion reflect that we're adopting alternative E10, or under section E10, the alternative showing a $15 an hour wage?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, got a motion? Second, second. All right. Discussion, we just had that, so anybody else has anything to say? All right, roll call, please.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, Trustee Hargit. We move on to public works and recreation. Trustee Mirabella.
I'd like to make a motion to ratify expenditures of $6,453.73 to All Fleet Incorporated for the repair of unit number six, 2007 international dump truck.
Second. Okay, discussion.
This is a.
That's a lot to do, 6,000, what'd they do?
Yeah, they did a quite overhaul if you look at what's on here.
Yeah.
They had to redo a bunch of it. The caveat of it is we used, a tax, we used a local first-hand fixer.
Okay.
I feel confident that the guy didn't stick it to us, he just did what he had to do.
It's a lot though for a dump truck.
It is, it is. It is, but it's one of the older vehicles, I mean, 2007s.
Yeah, I understand, I understand.
These things get beat up when they're following.
I know, I know. I heard they fixed it by now. All right, any other comments? Roll call, please.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Second, the guy has to request to approve the covenant code in Village Park time maintenance
Second. Second. Any discussion on that? Just something we do every year.
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, Trustee Mirabella, and welcome back.
Thank you.
Move on to public safety. Trustee McCarthy.
First, we've got a motion to ratify the expenditure of $3,959 to medical providers for performing job physicals for fire personnel to comply with OSHA requirements.
Second. Second, discussion. We're compliant now, right, chief?
Yes, 100% compliant with OSHA right now. Awesome. As of last week.
Let's keep it though.
Yeah.
I'll just say, well, you promised me, you will.
Kind of a baptism by fire for a second.
I got to roll right this a lot.
Yeah, I mean, right there, you know, so we really had no option in this, you know, but.
Yep, no, I understand. All right. Roll call, please.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried.
I move to set aside the rules of the President and Board of Trustees to waive the first and second readings of an ordinance declaring personal property surplus and authorizing the sale or disposal thereof of one 2011 Ford Expedition number 1792, and adopt as presented.
All right. Any discussion on that? All right, roll call, please.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried.
And then the last thing, Chief Cammada kind of ran through it all for me and Trustee White, but I can't remember all the details, so I'm going to hand it over to him to just talk about the discussion items.
Yes, thank you. First bullet point, the Firefighters Association donated two tablets for the ambulances to do our EMS reports on electronically. We currently have, I forgot what they are, some kind of iPad, but they're not very sturdy for the use they're put in, so they donated a total of $5,063 to buy two heavy-duty tablets that'll be used for the purpose of doing EMS reports.
$5,000 what?
A lot of their money comes from the portrait, the photograph fundraiser they have in town here, so that money comes back to the department and they thought this was a big need, and I agree with it. I use these tablets at my full-time job. They should get a lot of years of use out of them here, so I thank them for their vision of helping the department out with that purchase.
Is that the first time we've gotten a donation from them?
I don't know, Mayor, I, since I've been here.
I don't recall it, that's why I'm asked.
Since I've been here, yes.
Okay.
But they do a lot of fundraising for people that are on their department, that they come into an illness, like a firefighter refought, they've got in an accident, a lot of helping with Keke Peetie, stuff like that.
Give me the information, I'd like to, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Speaking of tablets, I got another tablet donated for dispatch cat for one of our fire trucks. We still need one more, but everyone I can get, I really had to pull some piece to get this out of the Lake County ETSB dispatch port. I was crying pretty hard, telling them, new year, it's Christmas season, so we got one more $3,000 tablet from them as well. Guys, like, don't call me back. I tapped that one out.
You can't call me for a year.
I don't know if I told you that, Michael, but, yeah.
I'm telling you, you can't call them for a year now.
Right.
Or five.
Next Christmas.
Next Christmas. I thank you, Rob.
And then 1712 was just sold. We originally, the department thought they'd get about $40,000 for a piece of equipment. Didn't quite turn out that way. It's a 1996, pretty beat up.
You got 12, right?
We got $12,000 for it in an auction. It was listed for price, there were no bites on it for several months, but we had to move on to it eventually, and now it's gone.
You had it on another site, then you didn't get nobody.
Right. An outright sell versus an auction, yeah. And there wasn't one even click besides myself looking, so. And I would like to recognize Bill Beech and he'll be retiring at the end of this month. Forty-seven years in the fire service here since 2008, just an invaluable person to have in the community, helping. just an invaluable person to have in the community helping. Yeah, it's gonna be a big loss for us.
I know Bill told me he wanted to stick it out for fifty years.
Yeah.
Any reason why he's going now? I mean, just, it's time, he feels it's time?
Yeah, I, yeah, I think so, I'll let him explain whatever he, he feels.
Yeah.
But, uh, we all miss him and his expertise.
What's he on next?
Uh, well, he's, he's on in the administrative role right now. Um, January third, we're gonna have a ceremony, or it's a walkout, we called it. Uh, we'll have Putin Beverly, a little ceremony to set him off.
I'll be out of town, but is he gonna be in, uh, here at this particular?
I don't know, he's part-time and scaled back right now.
He could send me a moment, or at least I won't talk.
I'll do that.
I think.
Um, and then today, I actually just got a box of wipes, I submitted for grants from a, an organization in Texas that, uh, was looking out for cancer in firefighters, and I wrote to them, they sent me a box of wipes, and they're kind of expensive, I don't know the full amount, but it was nice for these people, Texas has sent us this little fire department, a box of wipes that when our guys are on a fire or something, it's so all over them with all the carcinogens, now they can wipe that off on a machine and lo, lower their exposure to those carcinogens, so we're happy for that.
Fantastic, thank you, Rocky, for chief Campanella.
No problem.
All right, we move on to public comments. You'd like to address the board, come right on up, please state your name and your address.
Um, there's a young lady here on some of our official business, and I would like for her maybe to go first.
Okay.
She's in a typically set home, and, and my comments can wait a couple of minutes, so go ahead and do your thing.
Thank you, Verena.
Oh, yes, um, do you mind if I, then?
No.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Perfect, um, so this year, I would like to award this year's residential to both business, um, for our Christmas decorating contest. Um, I would like to thank, uh, our twenty-twenty-one Miss Whisper Parlor queens, we have Quinn. Uh, thank you so much, and we have Becca, um, along with chief Campanella, they, um, took on the task of driving around all the decorated homes, um, and picking just one residential in one business. Um, this year's residential is five-twenty Holdridge Avenue, uh, and this year's business is the Sweet Shop. Um, I will be going ahead and distributing their prizes donated by Mayor Bruno, um, tomorrow. Um, and you can go ahead and go on the website, we do have a list of all the houses that participated. Uh, if you wanna go ahead, um, drive around and take a look at all their hard work. Um, and then, from this year moving forward, we are going to be dedicating our annual Christmas decorating contest in honor of Keith PC. Um, he was obviously a dedicated member to Winter Park Fire Department, um, along with North Chicago and Monty Brook. Um, he loved Christmas, I, I'm sure we've all seen his homes driving around. Uh, he decorated it to the nines every year, loved Christmas, um, and he was such a pillar of our community. I, I, we really wanted to just honor him and dedicate this Christmas decorating contest, um, and this tradition into his name, so, um, every year now moving forward, it'll be Keith's Christmas, uh, contest, so. Yeah, if I can just get a quick picture, I'm sorry, I know I'm gonna, um, chief Campanella, can I get a picture with you and Quinn?
Look very judging.
Thank you so much. Yeah, perfect, I'm trying to find the background for the website, I'm sorry, everybody, thank you. Perfect, thank you so much again for helping, thank you so much, thank you so for helping, I know.
Trustee Whitmore, one or two, uh, both would be proud of that.
See, I go back to. No, I follow you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Thank you, trustee Whitmore.
Yes, and thank you for your donation.
Anytime, I'm good. Yeah, five-twenty Holdridge, what a house. Can I go by that?
Thank you so much.
I want to buy one, I know you.
Thanks. I, uh, I drove by that house, 'cause I, I hope this one entered.
Yeah.
It was amazing, gotta drive by that house. All right, Verena.
Hello, I'm Verena, I'm in the fourth twenty-one, we're being tried. Uh, first of all, congratulations to all the underwriters tonight, that was, that was, that was my, oh, we, 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 welcome. Um, I received a public notice, um, for a hearing for the expansion of the landfill. This is a siding hearing, um, I've been to several of those with the landfill, um, for a vertical and horizontal expansion. Um, the hearing is in January, I think January tenth. I'm interested, what, if anything, with the power has negotiated already? Uh, either fee-wise or protection for the neighbors, um, and so, maybe we'll start there.
Well, we tried, I mean, we really did try.
Zion owns it all?
I'm sorry?
Zion owns it all?
Yeah, well, it's a Zion dump, I know. But we did sit down with them, uh, to discuss, uh, a variety of issues.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and, uh, even hopefully more income for us, but it didn't happen.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Okay, I intend to go.
The contract is basically the same what we had in the past.
I, I intend to go to the hearings, um, if there is some list of things that you would like me to present, I'd be happy to do that.
I'm gonna have a conversation with the gentleman, can't think of his name, I know his name, first name's Mike, uh, but he's, uh, he runs the GFL, I've been concerned with GFL. Uh, just, uh, hopefully sit down and have a good conversation of just, hopefully I'll show compassion to our neighbors around the landfill.
I hope so.
I mean, he seemed to be a pretty, uh, nice individual, I've seen on Zoom, I've never met him in person. But, we're gonna have that sit-down, I've, I've talked to him two or three times, but just with the pandemic and issues, he's just trying to get that thing going over there.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I know there's issues, uh, things on, on, on the site, uh, that aren't working, that should be working, but I'm not sure what the, uh, I just gotta talk, have a good conversation with him, a nice, professional conversation with him.
And that's your public hearing, it's a public hearing on the public, um, anyone here from you? Fine, we can have several follow-up with that, but, um, I will, I will, um, see what, what we can do. Uh, siding hearings are fortunately tend to be mainly, it's complicated, um, we already missed the deadline, um, for, if we had any witnesses or need of representation, and it's already gone, but the hearing is on the test. I think anybody who was interested can come and listen to it, um, thank you for trying.
Yes, Bob, do you have anything else to say? I mean, you power more in detail as to the contract.
You know, it's the same, what they did essentially was, was carry over the price that they were paying on a per-ton basis on through the balance of the landfill area. You know, in a lot of the discussion that was around there, there are, we don't have much leverage. We've never had any leverage since we gave, since our predecessors, long ago, back in the eighties, gave it up, uh, decided not to annex the property and didn't exercise jurisdiction over it, we've never had any real power. There were a couple of places where we got some better financial benefit, we were never, never had any power over the, uh, the actual operations and the day-to-day impact on people's lives from, especially the, uh, the odor and the dust.
And the very.
Yeah, the, the stuff flying off of the, that comes through the air one night.
And it's gonna be even higher, and it's already the highest elevation in Lake County.
They say it's not gonna get any higher, right?
Yes, it is.
No, it's going to get higher, but when they, when they raise it, it's to its maximum height, it's going one more level.
It's gonna be horizontal and vertical expansions, they're gonna be building on the existing one even higher than it is right now.
Yeah, it'll be higher than around shortly, it's actually a little shorter than around, but it's not by much, by about twenty feet. And that's, you know, there's not much we, we can do other than try to do this. Now, we have worked at length with, uh, with the people around in that area, and tried to, tried to meet their needs. We've worked with state legislatures, we've tried to work with the solid waste states.
Yeah, what role does Swaco in Lake County pay in, play in this?
What role do they play?
Yeah, do they have to approve the natural expansion, the siding?
No.
But Swaco helped us a lot, they, they, they actually sat down with us with the attorneys for, at that time, advanced disposal. And, uh, we're just, they have very tough attorneys, very tough to deal with, in my opinion.
Well, it isn't just that, but they just, you know, Swaco doesn't, doesn't have the detailed power itself. They don't, they're not the siding authority, way along the line is, uh, the siding authority, first design, and then the inclusion control board and Springfield. Now, Swaco has a voice, and it's a loud, a relatively loud voice, 'cause it's comprised of a lot of people with, you know, a lot of political backing, but it's a voice. It's not a, it, it's not a threat, they can't threaten, just close down the rest of it. There is a provision in the statute that requires that they be, that the county get its cotton and the rest of this, get some regulations, so they do have a better seat at the table than we have, 'cause we don't have any statutory authority at all, we just have what we negotiated, period.
Yeah, I understand, they also proclaim to be good neighbors, and good neighbors don't do what obviously happens to them. I can smell it, and I'm, you started to involve.
Yeah, I don't worry, and I can smell it at my house, too.
Yeah, so, um, thank you, oh, one last thing, and, and there's somebody else, I'm not me. Um, we're done with construction, uh, Russell Road, yay. Turned out nice, but one thing though, there's still these bike lanes, I don't know what they were doing. For many, the access to the bike trail, um, and you have this sort of two-foot thing next to the traffic on, on Russell Road, I don't understand. I, I was hoping this would be wider and, um, safer for bikers, but it turned out to be just another road to park.
I don't even know if the Russell Road renovation was supposed to have a bike lane.
It was supposed, it was for the water, we had really big runoff from water there.
Oh, yes, they did all of that, but they also resurfaced.
Nine Street is the main bike trail there, Nine Street, and then.
I know, but they also resurfaced the roads and restripped the road, they could have thought about what that should look like when it's done. I, I told you even.
Plus, it's a more dangerous road to me.
That's why I don't think.
A state-owned road is a way more dangerous road to be bicycling on, just in my personal opinion.
That's why I don't think there was supposed to be a bike lane on that road.
Nine Street's much more safer, the speed limit's way down.
Yes.
And you don't have Wisconsin traffic and Illinois traffic on it.
Right. I am aware that, uh, Lake County DOT does have that, does have a bug trail planned for that road.
Yeah, by twenty-two, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand, I mean.
A bunch.
I don't think they'll be biking.
I had, I had the same question at the outset of the project, where, you know, this seems like an opportunity, or maybe we would consider adding it, and as is the case in many things, the same thing with our Sheridan Road resurfacing, is the same thing. We, we find out too late in the process that something's about to happen, once it's been engineered or put to let, it's in a capital budget plan, it's virtually impossible to stop that from proceeding as planned. Um, yeah, it's an issue that we've asked for help in being, I guess, made aware far earlier than when we see it starting to roll in.
Yeah, we have some input in what.
Yeah, but there are absolutely.
What goes through our town, literally.
There is a plan for a trail that would connect Robert and Chloe to Sheridan Road.
Yes, but, it's, it's a good plan, okay, you're welcome.
It is a good plan, thank you. Thank you, Verena. Anyone else? Yes, come right on up.
Hi, how are you?
Good, you?
I'm good, um, so my name's Barbara, I'm Tracy, and so first of all, I want to thank you all for allowing us to get a second liquor license. Um, I didn't understand, I think you were saying ten new, but I didn't understand that we had an option of applying for a second liquor license and not doing a temporary one, is that what you were saying? Can I talk to you? Anyway, so, after the last meeting, you had mentioned that you wouldn't mind having two Tracy's here. So, I am wondering, is it possible to keep both liquor licenses, or is that something we'd have to put before the board?
You'd have to put that before the board.
Okay, and how would I go about it?
Well, so we approved the liquor license already, the second one, correct?
That's correct.
But other stipulation there was canceled.
Yeah, and we're more than willing, I mean, we wanna do whatever.
Right.
You know.
So, so there was no formal stipulation or agreement, right, it was a handshake agreement with, uh, Tim?
Tim.
Correct.
Right, but technically, we've issued a second license for them.
And as I advised the board when they considered this in the first place, once you give a license, there are no contracts that can be required to take it back.
Right, but we don't wanna break a handshake deal, we want, you know, we want your blessing.
I understand that, I'm just saying, from a purely legal standpoint, you don't have to ask authority from anybody to do anything. It is, however, a sign of your good faith, that you're coming forward and asking the board to consider that.
My, my case was not that there was, you know, discussion of, of having two in town, like, I don't, I don't recall that being.
Yeah, I don't remember, someone said they would mind having.
No, so that, that was.
Oh, yeah, it's.
Right, so, I tried to articulate at the meeting that we are issuing a second, we are issuing a second license, right? That the, it's a handshake agreement, and, and my comment was, my feedback continues to be, that although Tracy's is not an establishment that I go and, and, it, it's not my entertainment, right? For as long as you've been here, I, I'm not aware of any issues that we've had, uh, for that type of industry, you, you're a leader, right? Uh, and have at times been, uh, actively involved with the community and have made donations to various places, and have tried to be a, a good corporate citizen, um, right? So, from, from that perspective, and you, you also generate, uh, a fair amount of revenue, uh, and are good, appear to be good at what you do, uh, is, is where I come from, I'm saying. Like, we're issuing a second license with the handshake agreement that it's to move towards shifting to the central downtown location, right? It, it's not the worst idea in the world to have two locations if they're both profitable and. You know why they got in in the first place? Do you understand the whole concept of what happened?
I do.
No, do you?
Yes.
It was supposed to be so much food, so much whatever, they have sub sandwiches, which I wouldn't eat it. They have, and I'm not down in the place, they have, they have people, you know who goes there? Church people I know that don't wanna be seen in the public, people that don't wanna be seen gambling, because it's the devil. Gambling's the devil to a lot of people. It's people that go there that are, it's a hidden place, it's a hidden gem. But the other people that have gambling, that had to go through all the process and have the so much amount of food and have so much area, it's a slap in the spit in their eye. So, I don't know if you know all that, you should, because you're the guy that does all this business stuff. But they make the most money, because most people go there because they don't wanna be seen, they don't wanna be out in a bar atmosphere. They don't want any of that, they wanna be hidden away in this nice little gem, to do their little gambling, that's the devil, that's so bad that they don't want people to see them. So, if you wanna talk truth, talk the truth. And it's sandwiches, it's, it's not even a food place, it's a sub sandwich that you cut up and you give to people.
Primary revenue is, is gaming and.
But it wasn't supposed to be. It was, when it was came to me, and I voted against gambling at first, it was came to me as this thing, and then I got talked to by a bunch of people and then voted for it, I completely changed my mind. What was brought to me was how it was supposed to be and what it was supposed to be. This is not that. So, for you to sit here on your high horse and say it's so good, to spit in the eye of all these other places that have to have so much food and so much space and all this other stuff, and they make the most money. So, it's great for them, 'cause they do, and the guy does the good, and it's quiet, because people go there, they, they don't want the bar seen. But it's not compliant for what the rules were supposed to be in, in my eyes. Never has been, but I'm not gonna complain, 'cause a lot of people go there that don't wanna be seen and don't want, that knowing that they gamble.
Thanks, Rob. I would ask you just to come back to the board to ask for this, this, to, to, you know, continue to, uh, have that one location. I mean, it, when I came, when, when I, you know, two people came to me and asked me my feeling about, you know, Tracy's moving from where it's at to the bank building, uh, under the stipulation that once they re-agree to that license so they can get their gaming license moving, 'cause it takes four to six months for the state to move that. Uh, once you got that set, you know, gaming license and the liquor licenses. Once he got that, you know, gaming license and the liquor license was already created, that he would cancel or close out that one. And now you want to leave that one open. So I would just ask you to come back, just ask the board for, if that's what you decide to do, to have that gaming license, or that liquor license open.
Okay, come back.
Because you're gonna have another gaming license there, too, I assume, right?
Correct.
Okay, once you get the liquor license, you can get the gaming license. So you're gonna have two at Harbor instead of just...
But they haven't, no matter what, they don't have to come back for anything. I think...
No, no, not for either one.
I agree. Right, but for either one, they don't...
We've already...
We're saying we've already given it to them. But my understanding was that if I stipulation moving to this one, and that's what I'm in favor of, of not, you know, allowing that, but not the new one. You know, that was my understanding as a board member, you know, speaking, that it's moving to the one. And if it was, if it was, if it came with the idea of two, I would have probably went differently on awarding second license at that time.
Same here, me too.
Yeah, if I can just clarify, because I'm the one who had the conversation with Tim, not with you.
Right.
The original ask from him was that he needed some help to be able to move and because you can't apply for the state gaming license until you actually have your occupancy and the license there, is there anything we can do? Explained to him on several occasions with Bob's health, how the law does not allow us to do that. That the only way we could accommodate would be to issue a second one. And he said, I'd be willing then to give up the first one when it opens. I explained, we can't make you do that if you want to. I said, your option is to come in and ask for two then. Don't come in and say that I want to do this spot. While you will be able to keep both, I would prefer you to be upfront with the community and just come in and ask for a second location at the beginning. He opted to not ask for the second location up at the beginning, but rather to offer this here handshake deal, which we cannot compel him to keep.
Oh, no, he'll definitely, definitely keep it. The only, the only reason the ask even came up was because after the last meeting, I went back to him and I said everything that was said and how everybody, you know, was really up. And he said, well, I, you know, that's all we can do about it. If, you know, if it's not in favor, then we'll do the handshake deal. You know, that's obviously, you know, what stories you can say. No.
That's how I remember it, too. I just said that he agreed to, you know, cancel that one once he got the other one, so... I mean, if he wants to keep that one, just have him come back and talk, you know, present to the board that he'd like to keep the other one. I don't think it'll be a problem, but I just would rather have him go through the process. I mean, he said one thing, he's doing something else, so...
Yeah, that's probably what we... Because of the last meeting, everybody was so positive that I went back to Tim and I said, is it possible? Because, you know, the, my fear, because so I manage this office. You know, Tim's kind of out of the loop, and he kind of leaves a lot of stuff in my hands. So my fear is that moving from that small little location where it's nice and cozy, we're now going to this huge place that, you know, it's gonna be, it's a big transition.
If you advertise it well, you're gonna be real busy at the new location. Lot of parking, and it's all your parking, not parking for everybody that's over at Harbor Plaza.
Yeah.
Can you handle both places?
Yeah.
Could you handle a hundred thousand dollars at one place?
I would just say, have Tim come back and just ask...
Lord, what do you mean? Could you handle it? I can handle a hundred thousand at both locations. Are you kidding me right now?
I'm there in the morning at the party.
No. No, I, I don't have an issue with it. I just, he had an original, like you say, handshake agreement. I'd just like him to come back and say, I've decided to keep the both facilities or both places, so... All right?
Go ahead, Tim, come?
Yeah.
Okay.
If that's okay with him.
Oh, yeah, I'll fly back for that, for sure. All right, well, thank you so much for listening, Tim.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
You too.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
You too, thank you.
You pull that nine-five on my man, I took you just there before.
Okay.
No, I'm serious.
What's that?
I feel like we just gotta be over here.
Okay. Anybody else?
I already got one one. Put another one in there.
All right, move on to unfinished business. I'll start down with Trustee Whitmore.
Yes, again, thank you for everyone who participated in the Christmas decorating contest. Thank you for everyone who came to Lunch with Santa, along with the parade. We had a really good turnout. We had a great turnout for Lunch with Santa. And then also, you know, obviously, my condolences to the PC family. Again, he was a huge member of this community and I just wish all, everything, you know, up from here for his family.
Thank you, Trustee, Trustee Levin.
Same here, I just asked what you left. The PC family and prayers. He's a great guy to work with. There's nothing else I can say that, how well he was and just a great spirited person, so... On that, I wish her a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Trustee Levin. Trustee, why?
Well, echo the same for the PC family. And, you know, it's great to have people that work so hard for the community and love the community and as we have the staff and departments and everybody here. Also, I want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and a healthy New Year. Stay healthy, please.
Yes. Trustee Hart.
All right, condolences to the PC family. He and his wife, you know, have been very involved in the community. I think the idea that Trustee Whitmore and the rec board, I think to honor the family in that way going forward with the decorating contest is a great idea. And I had people ask me about, is the Ho Ho House in...
Ho Ho, you took that right out of me to say that.
Yeah, so I think that's a very sweet gesture. I know we honored Bob tonight through the resolution, but, you know, just wanted to say, you've won a lot of hats for the village. I know you're not going anywhere, but still want to just thank you for this time and intero and the way that you've been able to help us with this transition. You know, you have been the interim administrator, the attorney for a lot of years, the neighbor. You know, assisting, your fingerprints are all over work at the EDC, the PDB. Right, there's, your fingerprints are all over this village and just really appreciate all of the years of service that you've given. And then for Dave, right, we're ready to hit the ground running, so tell us, I'm ready.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Trustee Hart. Trustee McCarthy.
I'll just second all the other comments that were made and wish everyone a safe and Happy Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. And just especially a big thank you to all our staff, especially Public Works, Fire, Police, you know, that have to work outside and, you know, be away from, you know, families, police. I know, you know, struggling staff, you know, over Thanksgiving. How are we looking for, you know...
With the onboarding of Chris, there's a distinct and very immediate sigh of relief.
Yeah, thanks, you know, big thanks.
So thank you very much.
To all them and everything they're doing. I mean, you were sending the emails with, you know, updating scheduling over the holidays, and I know a lot of them, you know, sent time away from family, you know, without, you know, at least as far as I know, without complaining, you know, to, you know, to keep us safe. So just thank you for that. Hopefully, things go smoothly over the next four weeks. But like I said, to all our departments, you know, the same, same thing, so, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee McCarthy. Trustee, Mayor Val?
Yeah, it's hard to lose a pillar to the community, but thanks for, it's nice that people recognize people and put stuff out there for that. We got, the parade was awesome. It was the same route. Everybody was complaining because we changed, we didn't really try to change the route, but the route was great. A lot of people came out. There was a lot of people parking. You went on my road, people were parking, people loved it, people came out. Said there was a lot of people. My daughter went, they said it was awesome, just the number of people that were waving and everything else, so...
Went right by your house?
Yep, because I moved. Luckily, I moved.
That's why you moved.
Thanks to Bob for everything he does. He does a lot. People don't know that he does it. A lot of the reasons, you know, he is part of the community. People don't realize that this is his home, so he has a vested stake in why he does what he does. Not that he wouldn't anyway, but it's just more of a stake because he lives here with us.
Thank you, Rob.
And the other thing is, for our department, we have snow plowing coming up. I know the rec department, we got a lot going on, too, with basketball, all that coming up. But for Public Works, hopefully, no more water breaks. I know we had it at one, and it can always be, stuff happens, especially when it starts getting colder. Snow plowing's coming up. That's one of the big reasons we had to spend a lot of money on it. We wanted that truck ready. So we do have one truck that's like a backup truck, but we need all them trucks because when you're out plowing, the reason we can plow so well and do things is because we always have something for a backup. So we always have that go-to. Something happens, we can't fix it while we're out there, we gotta just go get that other truck and get out there and do what we can do, so... Just want to let everybody know that. And we're, we're ready. Soap barn is full. We're ready to get at it. Hopefully, there's not a lot of snow, but you know what they say when there's no snow, that it's really cold. So we don't know. I know it's supposed to rain for Christmas. I know everybody likes a white Christmas, especially my family, but everybody have a good holidays. Just glad to be back to my fiery self. I apologize if I'm too fired up, but I just, that's the way I am. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Trustee Mayor Val. I'd just like to say regarding Keith PC, a good friend. Been a friend of mine for many, many years. He's actually a patient of mine and was a patient of mine. He's definitely loved this village very, very much. My cousin was his chief at North Chicago for a while, so, no, he's, he's gonna be dearly missed. But I'm glad that the parade, not the parade, but the Christmas decorating contest would be named after him. He would be smiling to hear that. I know he would because he loved Christmas, as Trustee Whitmore said. And he loved to decorate his house. Says Ho 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 on top of the group. Also, thanks to Bob Long as well. I said it after the proclamation, but I'll say it again.